All right, I apologize for the late start. We had a work session and a lot of information that we needed to cover. So will you all rise with me for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And to the council, I had requests from a number of individuals asking us to be sure to speak into the mic. So if you could make a conscious effort to do that, that'd be great. Thank you. So let's start off with roll. Erin, are you going to be doing that? Who's acting as our assistant tonight?
Sure, I can do that.
Okay.
I'll get your water filled up. We'll be in good shape. Councilmember Kelly.
[laughing]
Councilmember Kelly.
Here.
Councilmember DeYoung.
Opposite side, here.
Councilmember Dunley.
Here.
Councilmember Kinser.
Present.
Councilmember Carnegie.
Here.
Councilmember Owen.
Present.
And I happen to know that Councilmember Couch is tied up on a law enforcement call.
So could I have a motion to excuse him?
Let me have a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Opposed? I didn't think so. So let's move into the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. I had a motion by Councilwoman Kinser and seconded by Councilwoman Dunley to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. The consent agenda. Do you have a motion for the consent agenda?
I move that we approve consent agenda items 1 through 7.
Second.
Yes, all right. So I have a motion by Councilwoman Carnegie and seconded by Councilwoman Kinser. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Okay, tonight we have Ian Larson. Is he here? Yes, he is. He's going to give a presentation regarding the Sejuoli Downtown Association an update. Welcome, Ian.
Erin, hi, thank you. Erin, are you going to take care of me over there? Okay. So before I start, I wanted to tell you guys what I've been experiencing over the last couple of months with the Downtown Association. This is my first entrance into the nonprofit and to the working with the city. It's been really exciting to get to know everybody on the board and working with the city has been fantastic. There's been a lot of challenges trying to get, you know, everybody to see the same direction and whatnot, but it's been fun and I always welcome any suggestions or questions that you guys might have. So today, I thought it would be a good time to come in and show you guys what we've been working on. So recently gave an overview to our board and there's been some new developments. So here we go. First thing I wanted to announce was along with Habitat for Humanity and Perkins Farms, we are going to be partnering with the Sejuoli High School CTE marketing program. And they are, over the next, this school year, they're going to be helping us come up with a marketing plan and executing it throughout the year. So we'll be doing stuff with social media, promoting our businesses downtown and events. There'll be email marketing. We already have a pretty good list going, but we'll be working that and nurturing that. Content marketing, so I'm big on that for, you know, writing content regarding what's happening down here. We do a little bit of that with the city. And ads and posters and radios. So I'm really excited to get involved with that. And I saw you up here too. We're meeting this next week with the students for the first time. So yeah, it's exciting. So remember the video store? Okay, so it burned down and now there's a grassy knoll, a brown grassy knoll. [laughing] So I spoke with the owners of the building, the land now, and they thought it would be a great addition and a great opportunity to create a green space, Sejuoli Downtown Park down there in the interim until they know what they're going to do. So, and right now, they don't have any ideas and they said it would take a couple of years to get a couple of ideas put together and then the planning. So we're hoping to get at least five years out of it. The landowners, they want to use their own design crew. You can see they've got kind of just a very rough little thing there. They called it Heritage Park. I'm not sure that's the right word for it, but... I also talked with Nate about possibly having a maintenance contract with the city. I think he's talked to you about it. So that's an opportunity there to kind of help us maintain it all. I've also got lots of volunteers downtown that want to help support that. I know the ladies at the flower shop and myself and a couple of other businesses that want to use it, they're all for something like that. Possible features, we just kind of sat down and talked about this spitballing with the owners, you know. They'd really like to see some markets and events, you know. And the gals from Restless and Refurbished, they would love to have, you know, street fairs and kind of spew out into the area next spring. So that's kind of what they wanted, you know, harbors and... Oh, man. Harbors and trees and plants, you know, benches and someplace where some people can go and have some lunch. You know, I know firsthand that most of the Janice people have to eat lunch at their desk because there's not a lot of places to eat except for restaurants, which I appreciate. And then also...
I just want to say it's kind of interesting that there's so many ideas that have been generated from one little patch of land.
I know.
Yeah, downtown, yeah, yeah.
And then also, you know, just kind of like a map of attractions and features of our downtown area, you know, like last summer, I'm sitting at the, in my restaurant and watching people kind of go like this, wondering what can they do, you know? Well, let's guide them to the museum or the restrooms or the parks and whatnot. So, but it's open for discussion and I'd love to get the community's involvement when it gets to that point. And we are looking at doing this pretty quickly. I talked to them today and we're, I would say, a month or so before doing, starting something on that, as long as the city doesn't have any issues with it and things like that, which we haven't even gotten there yet. So next, so this is the old car wash. So thanks to Aaron Berg, we've really been kind of just poking and trying to get this project moving forward. When I first started this association, I thought this would be a great opportunity to really change the way that Sejuoli looks when you first come in. Right now, 6:30 in the morning, you've got lots of vehicles, overflow parking from the overflow, you've got, you know, people parking there throughout the day. So, and it's not well kept up. The problem is it's contaminated soil and it's just a big, big project to overcome. So I reached out to the owner, reached out to Aaron, and we are slowly beginning to kind of put a plan together. He's worked with his consultants to create a proposal so we can move forward with the assessment and look at what that could be, that could look like, what the liability could look like, and things like that with the owner. Some future uses we've talked about, I pretty much gleaned these all from the Revitalize Woolly event that we had last summer. You know, a food truck hub, something that when we have the Brew Fest, we can bring in our food trucks and, you know, attract that kind of action. We've got, you know, lots of eco-tourism, base camp ideas, you know. We could bring in tour guides on the weekends and, you know, you've got River Rafters and hikers and North Cascades Institute. You've got, you know, thousands of people heading that way. You know, public bike racks, more bathrooms, picnic benches, not public parking. So what's next? We should talk, but you know, it looks to me like, you know, we need to look at the proposal that the consultant sent and work with legal and city council. And this is definitely a long-term project, but it's one that I'm super excited about.
So Ian, I appreciate the shout out, but I'm just doing my normal thing. The thanks really goes to the mayor and council on this one for kind of keeping the ball rolling.
Thank you.
And process-wise, what we don't have our arms around is, and we've talked about this with the group, is what would the cost component be and how do we address risk? But, you know, conceptually cleaning up that corner is something I've heard nothing but, I've seen nothing but nodding heads and heard nothing but support.
Right, yep. And I'm simply just poking him and he's poking you and so I just, you know, so I appreciate all your support on that, guys. I just thought it was you doing all the work. So welcome to Sejuoli Sign. I gave this as a hard, I gave you kind of some references to the no parking area. You might recognize we're not a park now, so you know, at this point in time.
I can't see that slide.
This is, Mestizo's is right here, then you've got the "Don't ever park there ever again," and then you've got kind of the, the end of the Burlington Northern, Mac Trail kind of way.
Cascade Trail?
Hmm?
The Cascade Trail?
Yes, yeah. So I reached out to Burlington Northern, met a new gal. Her name is Jordan. She's new to the company and is very excited to help us with things. And she seemed open to help, but then kind of pushed me towards the leasing agent who I'm now, I'm just basically asked for a sample lease, what that would look like. And it actually includes this tiny little piece here, which I want to put just kind of a welcome to Sejuoli. So the idea is that, you know, we've got Thoroughfare coming up, Ferry, and then we've got people taking a right on Metcalf from Highway 20. We're trying to make it beautiful from all aspects of people coming in. So this little corner, real simply, could be, you know, something beautiful. It's also a historical component.
Ian, in front of you. So those of us who really can't see the slide here because of our positioning, could you describe what streets those are in the intersection, please?
So you've got Metcalf and Northern, and then, yeah, Metcalf and Northern, right?
What's the building in the background?
This is one of ours.
Okay.
And this is just a flat line right down the street. Mestizo's is right here, Burlington Heights. There's actually a better picture you might want to get for the next one.
One question before we move on here. Um, this is my mic. We've had a rather pointed campaign online right now about the NIMs parking lot area there north of Mestizo's and them having people towed away.
Yep.
Is there some plan afoot there?
Well, I did ask you about that, I think, a couple of weeks ago, and I don't think it was open for discussion at this point. But, you know, after seeing and hearing what people are talking about, I think it should be a number one issue. I think we need to talk about that. So, and I, you know, I don't know who knows the owner or what we can do, but I'm absolutely open to approaching that. And it either needs to be a parking lot or developed, or I don't know. But it's certainly an issue. You see it on Instagram and on Facebook, people getting their cars towed and stuff. It's not good for business at all. So, does anybody want to volunteer to put me in contact with the lady?
We'll leave that up to you, but I'd like to hear the rest of what you're saying about this.
Okay.
So what's your plan here?
So I've been asked not to use the word trailhead, okay?
Okay.
So, but the idea is, is that we have a trailhead that brings people, a reason to come to downtown, park, go up the trail, walk, come back, you know, visit our parks, visit our, you know, lunch spots, things like that. There's tons of parking there, like if we were to, on Northern, if you were to create a simple harbor with some information, a landing zone, maybe a map that goes up, maybe, you know, discreetly, you know, create this trailhead, then the idea is, is it creates another reason to come down to Sejuoli.
Okay.
The other, so I talked to Burlington Northern about two places. The other one was this quite historic triangle. And this is, so we were just looking at here. I gave you some references to that apartment. And then, so you've got Metcalf, and you've got this big triangle that is just man, crowded with communities and whatnot. And I asked them first, you know, what would it take to become a historical park and celebrate the railways there? Certainly got pushback on that. Got redirected to go take a lease, you know, get a lease for it. But then slowly starting to work towards maybe talking to somebody within the organization that could help us create something more than just a leased parking lot. So, nothing more to report on that. But I did put a URL in there. If anybody's interested in the history of this little space, it's quite interesting. And that link has quite a story. What else have we got going on? Oh, I missed my logo there. So the Brew Fest is coming up on the 20 seconds in two Saturdays. So it benefits the Helping Hands Food Bank, but we spun off and did a little VIP event. And so that is one of our fundraisers. It's almost sold out, but if anybody's interested, would love to have you. The information is on Facebook. We've got Bod Horse and Local 20 and Bistro. We're all coming together and putting something great together.
And before you move on there, I want to say that the director of Helping Hands Food Bank and Opportunity Center, Rebecca Larson, is here. Welcome.
Another project, so I got suckered into, that's not the right word. I got offered a great opportunity to be on the board of the Lager Rodeo last time I went there. And so I went there with an idea because one of the initiatives that we looked at when, with the Revitalize Woolly event, is people really thought that the carvings needed to be addressed. And that would be something we could celebrate our heritage and make everything look more beautiful downtown. So what we are doing, we've pretty much got all the pictures taken and we're putting up on our website a system where Brenda would be able to say, "I want to contribute 50 bucks to this guy." Boom. And then when we reach, you know, 250, boom, that guy goes and gets repaired. So it's kind of a longer-term project, but it allows us to have like little micro campaigns throughout the year and community can get involved here and there. Until someone wants to just write a big old check and then we'll just take care of it all on time. This is something that, you know, when we were in Port Townsend, I really thought was important and it goes back to what we, what I said before, you know, I'm not sure people really know what all is downtown because they go from the market to Ferry Street, turn around and come back, you know. And I think if we were to maybe educate them a little bit more, so having some kind of Wayfair signs like that is going to be included in the park. But I'm hoping to talk with Planning Department and get some guidelines on how I can get those built and get them paid for. And Nate, again, said he'd help me get them installed on his own time. Any questions?
I have a suggestion.
All right.
I didn't get to bring it up before, but when you were talking about the little park, I was wondering, like, how does that work with garbage pickup? It'll be a garbage can there or recycling or anything?
There'll be, yeah, there'll be tons of garbage cans. Yeah, there'll definitely be a garbage can recycled. So a recycle bin was something that the community really wanted and I thought this would be a great opportunity to have maybe almost like a larger recycle can, a larber, larger garbage can, kind of towards the back of it.
Also cigarette dispensers.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, I'd like to buy like 30 of them and just pass them out. Certainly an issue.
Thanks. Ian, I've got a question and maybe I should save it for later, but I'll forget about it.
This is it.
Do you think that the wall on the side there where the new park is going to be would be good for outdoor theater? Would it be big enough?
I don't know. So...
May I address that? Yeah. We had outdoor movies at the Mason's Building. Uh huh, I remember that. Where they do the log show. And that was big enough. I can't see that we could move back far enough from the screen. Unless we closed off the street. Yeah. But again, we had very, it got to where we had very low turnout. Okay. So after, I don't, I probably did that for 10 years. And each year was dwindling returns to where the cost of putting the movies on exceeded the value that we were bringing in to pay for.
Okay. Ian, I think you have an event happening October 4th, correct? Did you want to speak to that?
Yes, it didn't get included, actually. So we're doing a volunteer drive. It's Thursday, the 4th of October. It's at the Bistro, Liberty Bistro Downtown Sejuoli. Please come. Just asking people to, like, listen. We're going to, I'm going to take these and dissect them down into committees and I really want people to get involved. And that's one of my biggest struggles right now is getting, you know, humans to actually, like, help.
Engage, okay.
Yeah, we're, everybody's so busy.
Time, do you have a time on that?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock, okay. Six o'clock on the 4th at Liberty Bistro.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else? You're doing a great job. Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
We appreciate your time and energy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Becky.
Okay.
And we will move on to staff reports. Chief Tucker.
All right. We had a little bit of activity over here at the skateboard park. Sergeant Harris took it, took it as a mission to go address some concerns that had been passed on to us. So far, we have trespassed nine individuals who decided they didn't want to abide by the rules and we made one arrest for a minor in possession. So, and it's kind of changed the dynamic of the kids there. You know, honestly, it's kind of nice that, you know, the kids have a safe place that they can gather, but letting it go a little bit, the wrong gathering started happening and it's causing some havoc for one of the neighbors there. So, so we, I think we addressed that issue and I think Sergeant Harris is going to keep on it. And then as soon as it starts getting cold, wet, rainy, we're going to have less issue going on there. But we have, our newest officer is up at the range right now. He goes to the academy next week. So about five and a half months after that, we'll have him back for training. Looking forward to getting him going. And if you see our cars zooming back and forth from here over to the airport, we've got EVAC going on this week, Emergency Vehicle Operator Course. So they're out on the runway, driving really fast, winding through cones, killing cones, doing all sorts of fun stuff. I said it's a lot of fun in the downpour we had this morning, driving 60 miles an hour, winding through the cones. So they're having a good time, so. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Chief Klinger.
Well, we've been working on EMS. As we, as we did just a few hours ago, about an hour ago, we worked on EMS and that's what we've been doing for, since July, pretty much. It's been all EMS 100% of the time. But we did have a chance to fit in the Washington State Survey and Rating Bureau. Luckily, Chief Olson worked with them as they came in and they were in, what, two weeks ago and completed our rating. So we're just in the wait mode now. We'll find out what they give us this go-around. And an update on our firefighter, Tatiana. They were able to close the wound, so now we're just hoping that she gets to come home here soon because we're all dying to go and visit her and it's just horrible trying to get through Harborview down there. So we're looking forward to getting home. So I'm sure we'll be talking EMS more later on, so I'll just pass it along.
All right, thank you. Mark.
Thank you, Mayor. Not too much news since the last time I reported. The operating engineers' 304 strike was settled last Thursday and they are back to work. So we're looking forward to the finishing of the sidewalk project from Township to Fruitdale in the next two or three weeks. And the contractor up on Fruitdale never stopped, but they were down to a very short crew for that period of time. They're back to full strength now and we hope they'll finish, I'm imagining there'll be a two or three week delay on their original completion. They're probably looking at mid-October on that. But they are moving ahead pretty well. They've poured the concrete curbs for the mini roundabout and, and we'll be putting base in there pretty quick on that and getting ready to pave that. The State Street overlay project is scheduled to start on the 17th, which is next Monday. They'll be doing the waterline work and the curb ramp repair for the first couple of weeks, then getting ready for the overlay work after that. You awarded the Wes Bennett, Wes Nelson, Beatty Sewer Project tonight. That's also SRV, same as the State Street project. I'm imagining they'll start that up pretty quickly as well, try to get that in with the weather coming as quickly as they can. We also received the final drawings for the wastewater treatment plant, Phase 1 improvements. I'm reviewing those. We'll hopefully have that out to bid in the next two to three weeks and start that work yet this fall or winter. Other than that, the other projects you've heard about are continuing. I should give Nathan the opportunity to report on the RCL grants too. Would you like to do that, Nathan? Okay. We've been meeting pretty much continuous since 8 o'clock this morning. The two applications were for the Memorial Park Spray Park and also the Hauser Playfields Parking Lot and other improvements there. We ranked pretty well on Hauser, I think 17th. 16 out of 53. Generally, they fund up to like project 25. We won't know for sure until legislature votes on that, but that one's looking pretty positive. We ended up about the middle of the pack on the Memorial Park and probably pretty far out of the money on that one. So staff and administration have been talking about whether that project should go forward at that level that we've applied twice, or should we look at that as a smaller project and do what we can ourselves? And that discussion is ongoing. We met with the Parks Board tonight and discussed that with them and their consensus was to move forward with improving what we can now, like upgrading the playground facilities and doing some improvements, you know, to the paths and the turf out there on that site. So anyway, more will come out in the future on that as well.
And I just want to say, I know that there has been a lot of time, energy, there's a lot of work that has gone into these grants and I thank you on behalf of the city for doing that. I know that it's, it's really disheartening when the news comes back that we're not even in the running or that you're not in the running, but thank you, Nathan. Thank you for all your hard work. Thank you, Mark. Erin.
Erin wanted me to report also. [laughing] He's been talking all day as well.
Yeah.
We have an opportunity, since our project is still ongoing, to add a piece of sidewalk along the Northern State's Road, Thompson Drive, whatever the name of it is. There's about 330 feet there to the gatehouse and so we approached the port about that and they've given their verbal, or at least email approval to do that as a part of our project. And so that'll actually complete our pedestrian system all the way up to the gatehouse there and one side of the park, which we, we're anticipating would be done by the port at some point. Since we now own the property, I thought it incumbent to approach them now rather than later and while we have a project that we could do it at the best prices available. So we are looking to add that into our project and go ahead and construct that as well.
Is that tip money? Where's that, where's that coming from?
No, that would be port money.
Port money, okay, thank you.
Yeah, and so we have an existing interlocal agreement with the port to, for the port to pay for the fiber that was constructed as part of this project. And what we're proposing to do is amend that agreement to add the additional scope of work, which is what, about $23,000?
About $24,000 to do that.
$24,000. So there's a, there's a timing issue. So there's a, there's a timing issue on this one, because we need to do it while the contractor's still mobilized. So I guess I'm looking for your comfort level. Technically, what we'd be bringing you if we had it, so we just figured this out this afternoon, middle of all EMS all the time, but what, what we want to do is, is have a, you know, an amendment to the existing interlocal for the fiber that simply adds the additional scope of work, and the port will pay 100% of the cost of that scope of work. So I guess I'm looking to council to see if you're comfortable delegating authority to execute that amendment, totally recognizing that it's not in front of you, but it's the same agreement, larger scope, they pay 100%.
I'd like to move that we amend the agreement to include the scope of work.
Sir, a second?
Second.
An a motion by Dunley and a second by Kinser. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you. We'll move ahead on that basis.
Mark, I have a question real quick. The rock wall rebuilding and replanting is still part of that plan, right?
You mean the slide repair?
No, the rock wall along the roadway into...
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Swift Center.
Yeah, we've saved all the stonework there. We're actually gonna have a little bit of surplus, but no, they don't, the plan calls for that to be rebuilt between the roadway, excuse me, the, outside of the new sidewalk that's going in and will parallel the outside of the roundabout. And then there'll be a gap in the wall, and it'll go back to its original location where it hasn't changed. And that's the point where we're gonna extend this 330-foot of sidewalk all the way to the gatehouse, so it'll run, it'll remain where it's at, and the sidewalk will be on the south side of that.
Okay, yes, great.
And same way on the north side, it'll parallel the, the shape of the new, new roundabout.
Well, thank you very much. I think that'll be helpful. That project's winding down, and we definitely love the opportunity to get the sidewalk built with the crew still mobilized. So as Dean said, it is indeed all EMS all the time here at Cedar Willy City Hall, and we'll talk about that a bit later on the agenda. On the other projects front, on the library, we're continuing to make good progress on that. We've got the meeting scheduled now for October, oh, what is it here? The right page, October 10th, October 10th at 5:00 PM will be a special joint meeting of the city council and the district board to see the 90% design. The Iron Skillet, of course, wrapped up business at the end of last month, and they're busy doing whatever it is that they want to do with the space before they turn possession over to the city. Nathan's been very, very busy prepping that project for demolition, so just so you know what the sequence is, Reba has until the end of September to have possession. We're not sure if she's gonna take all the way to the end of September or turn it over earlier than that. Once we have possession of that building, we will immediately launch an online auction through public surplus.com to sell all of the equipment in the restaurant that the city purchased as part of that acquisition. It'll be a fairly short turnaround time. Simultaneous with that, Nathan will manage a contract with an asbestos abatement contractor to get in there and do that work. That contract will likely exceed our signature authority without, well, depends on what we have in the budget. I forgot about that. The council has delegated authority for us to execute agreements for the library project consistent with the budget, so we may sign that and report on it. We may bring it to, to look at it more closely, but the point is, the next step will be the asbestos abatement process. And Nathan's intent is to mobilize the city crew on or about October, probably 22nd, for a skeleton crew to get in there and start peeling out metal for recycling, and then on the 29th, mobilize the big equipment, so the site will be fenced at that point, and the big excavator will come in for demolition. I know, I've received a number of calls, and I know Nathan has, and I know the mayor has, I'm guessing that you may as well. There seems to be a growing community of people who would just really love to come into the buildings and take things for reuse. I mean, it's all noble purposes, right? There's beautiful wood. I'm really struggling with trying to figure out how we can do that in a way that makes any sense for the city, because what people would really like is if the city could maybe just demolish half to make it safe, and then somehow people could get in there and pull out two-by-twelves or whatever. So we're discussing internally whether we could find a way potentially to take wood that's easily repurposed and salvageable and put it in a first-come, first-served location like we do with firewood when we take a tree down, so people could potentially get access. But there really isn't a way that I can see where the city could safely and reasonably make the site available to people just to come pick it. You know, the, the cost of simply having the equipment on standby makes that tough. So our intention, though, is to salvage the twelve-by-tall by 30-foot clear-for beams for potential reuse either at the library site or elsewhere. There's about a dozen of those. And we did invite the museum into the old feed barn this week. They've got a couple items they'd really like to see located in the museum, including the scale and a couple other things. So they're, you know, we're trying to make the site available for what makes sense, but I know I've gotten that call more than once, and I just, you know, if somebody's got a great idea, I'd love to hear it. I also don't know how many times I've heard, you know, somebody would take it down for free if they could salvage it. Nobody's actually come and said, I'd be willing to take all the risk, all the asbestos and everything down for free if I could salvage it, because if they can do it with a bond and fit all the public bidding requirements and all that, I think we'd sign that deal today, because it will cost us money to demo it. It will not be free, nor will it make us money. So that's that process. At the end of the demolition, then Nathan's crew is gonna turn their attention to excavating unsuitable organic materials off the site and hauling it, as well as pulling out all the asphalt and concrete. And then they're gonna bring in preload materials. I think we're estimating, what, about five feet of solid light bar over the building footprint area, so that can sit and preload from, you know, really November through construction. And during that phase, we'll have to have the geotech involved, because they'll come out and inspect, and surveyors will be involved to make sure that we're settling everything correctly. We don't really understand why our site needs preloading and the one across the street didn't, but we're not geotechnical engineers, and we paid somebody to tell us that, and that's what they told us, so we're gonna follow their advice. So that's that process. Otherwise, we're on track for February bidding. April, notice to proceed, and the construction window's still with a spring of 2020 move-in date on track and on budget for that project. And then the last thing is, did you want to mention the school district sign partnership demo, or do you want me to mention that?
Go ahead, go ahead.
So for a number of you, this will be familiar. For a number of you, it's new, but we have been talking to the school district for many years now about replacing the reader board with a digital sign. And we kind of went out with the district last week and looked at locations, and today we had a demo from a sign company with an electronic reader board. What we're looking at is getting a proposal to locate it at Bingham Park, so it'd be on, on that side of the roundabout. We can pick up about 10,000 cars a day, additional traffic, by not being in its current location. Plus, we don't actually have the right to be at the current location, we're squatters there. Details. So under that scenario, we would delete the existing reader board, replace it with a digital sign that could be controlled by both the city and the school district, and it flashes a series of messages, just like you see at Blade Chevrolet or any of these other locations. And that one would be visible to about 22,000 cars a day. It's a fairly expensive project. We don't know the exact dollar amount, but the range is wide, 60 to 100,000, I would say. The school district and the city have long talked about splitting that 50/50. That's the district's understanding. I've made it clear to the district that we're still super interested, but we haven't actually talked to council about it with this new council, and it's not currently in the budget. So that's just a heads up that it's being discussed. We're gonna get a proposal, and that may be an item for consideration in the 2019 budget. We need to know how much it costs first. So if you saw, if you saw a truck on the side of the road with signs flashing the city's logo and school messages from other school districts, that was us playing with the sign to see how it might look on Highway 20 at that location.
Now, it's pouring rain. Did you mention the auction? Did you mention that? Iron skillet auction there?
Yes.
Okay.
Aaron, keep in mind on the sign when it's replaced, if it's replaced at the museum, might possibly be interested in that old sign, the existing, current existing sign.
Oh, really? The reader board?
Yeah.
I was at the museum this weekend, and I saw the, the Iron Skillet directional sign from the side of the road, and it was interesting that there was a whole story about how they ended up with it.
Yes, there is.
Practically a fight with the wrench on the side of the road, so. I'm glad it made it to the museum. It's funny, when, when I was contacted about that, I thought the discussion was about the large sign out front, and I didn't realize it was just that sign, and even that sign, there was a line of people trying to take it down, so. It was good to see it in the museum.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
Just checking on the ETA of track removal on State and by our library.
Yeah.
State Rita?
We lost a few weeks due to the strike on that project, of course, but we're looking probably within the next two to three weeks that that'll come out.
All right. Doug, you're on.
Thank you. I have a couple items for you tonight. The first is the budget. We're working forward on the 2019 budget right now. The departments are responsible for getting numbers back to finance.
You gotta get a little closer.
This foam tastes good. With the 2019 budget, we'll be working forward on that. Departments are bringing their estimates forward by the 18th. That's our deadline for that, and then I'll start putting all the numbers together so we get the first cut at how things are looking for next year. I'm hoping to have the target date for that for revenue projections right about the end of this month as well. And even as of today, we're putting some final touches on that. During the month of October, that'll be a quiet but very busy time. The administration and myself will be meeting with each of the department heads and going through their individual budgets and working those out with the goal of getting really things finalized in October, so we can start bringing those items to you in November. So budget is moving forward. The second item is lodging tax. On your agenda tonight is the appointment of the committee to review the applications for next year. So as soon as we get the committee settled, we'll get them convened, get them trained up, and we'll have that discussion as far as awarding lodging tax monies to the different community events for next year. The tentative date for that to come back to, to the city council is the 26th of this month. Depending if we can get everybody together for that meeting, if we have a little difficulty on scheduling, it'll probably be the first part of October. And that's what I have for you tonight.
All right. Thank you, Doug. So council reports. Chuck?
I had the opportunity and, and the privilege of going down to the county commissioners yesterday and make a presentation on behalf of the senior citizens in Cedar Willy, and especially the center. And I explained the operation the best I could and bragged about our accomplishments and upgrades, thanks to, thanks to Nathan, his crew, and Aaron for getting the floor done. But anyway...
That wouldn't have happened without you, in all honesty. You were the squeaky wheel that kept that one going.
Don't wanna take the credit. You've got it done, so that's good. But anyway, they declared September Senior Citizens Month, so be nice to your parents or your grandpa or whatever.
How come that coincides with diaper awareness week?
I don't know. I don't know. They had, they had another presentation there that, I think it was for drug addicts and alcoholics and recovery. And it was, I sat in on that, and it was really interesting. And I felt sorry for, for Lisa. She was there, you know what happened to her last year, so. It was pretty tough for her to go through that, so I got...
Thank you, Chuck. Jermaine?
Thanks. I just wanted to mention that Spirit of Hope is quite a few weeks off right now, but they're changing it from a breakfast to like an evening thing. It's gonna be a little bit different than usual, and that's not until October 11th, but they are selling tickets right now on their website for Community Action. It's gonna be October 11th, 5 to 8 PM at the Swenamish Casino, and so that, that's a benefit for them, and the tickets will be online on their website for Community Action.
They're $25 a piece.
It's $25, yeah. Or you can buy a table for $250.
Thank you, Jermaine.
That's it.
Brenda?
Well, I guess probably most of the people in the city know the hot topic, and my ward from the weekend on was about the Lotnix demystizos. And I don't know, I don't know how we move forward on this. I don't know if there is a solution, if we can come up with a solution, but definitely needs to be addressed, because it's certainly not fair to have all these people towed in this matter. So I don't know what the suggestions are. Chief, do you know if there's any resolution or...
I have no idea.
Yeah, I don't know if we can, but maybe a nice discussion, possibly.
Well, the city has had discussion with her. It is her property, and she has the right to do whatever she wants with it.
I know.
And I know it's not what we would hope she would do, but she does have the right to do that, and we have had discussion with her.
Yes, unfortunately, but it would be great if we could all play nice. We're a community.
I agree. I agree. Thank you. Judith?
I have a question. How are the wards organized? Are they by population?
Yes.
Well...
So the wards are done every decade, so the next ward adjustment would be scheduled to occur in 2022, so the census happens in 2020.
Oh, of course.
Those results all get crunched and managed in 2021 for redistricting that would occur effective in 2022. And we do our very best to just balance them, so there are six equal wards and the seventh at-large ward, and always the mystery of what to do if the two residents that the Census Bureau reports live in our cemetery.
But I know where you're going with it. As much as we've grown and we've also brought people in...
Yeah, and Mr. Janicki's presentation last week, and how many possible residences that would be. They're all in my ward. So I was just curious.
You know, I have not thought about this recently, but I don't think there's anything that would preclude the city council from redistricting or earlier than every decade other than, you know, we would, we would lack the data, right?
Yeah, yeah.
That's the challenge.
That makes lots of sense.
We do provide annual reports to the Office of Financial Management for our population growth based upon building permits, and if we annex an area, we're supposed to actually do physical door-knocking site visits to do, you know, surveys of residents, but that's the challenge, that's the reason for the decadal redistricting is census data.
Makes sense.
All right. Thank you, Judith. Carl?
Thank you very much. I just wanted to, again, now that we're out of work session, and to publicly acknowledge all the hard work that's been done on this EMS disruption and all the hours that have been spent to make something happen in its implementation, and to the senior management of our fire department in making something happen and making something that we could take a look at today. So I really wanted to say how much we appreciate that hard work. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl. Paula?
I just wanted to mention that United Way...
Can you, can you speak into your mic? Would you? Thank you, thank you, Paula.
I had it on, I just didn't have it near me. United Way has their kickoff breakfast on Friday morning, so those of you who may want to attend, they do have ability to sign up online. And I have a question for Aaron. Are we going to have a candidates forum this year?
Excellent question for all of you. So the city has run a candidates forum every two years for the last six years, so this would be the fourth in a series. And we've generally done that when there are contested races that affect Cedar Willy voters. So that's a question for all of you, if you'd like to do it. I don't see why we couldn't do the same thing we've done in the past, which is invite all the candidates, run a neutral moderated forum, similar but slightly different from the legal women voters rules. We allow empty chair participation, and we also, we just... We allow empty chair participation, and we also, we just, we just have some deviations that I think are intended to engage folks in a little bit more back and forth, so.
Well, from what I'm hearing, a lot of people are interested in the freeholder charter. And there's an awful lot of names on that. But some kind of a presentation about it seems like it might be worthy to hear from people regarding both sides of the, of the topic and also maybe something that's educational. The Skagit Business Alliance has invited Commissioner Janicki to speak on this at the farmhouse on next Tuesday morning at 7:30 a.m. We do have very limited seating for that, but if you are interested, please contact the chamber and we'll see if we can get you a place in that thing. If not, you can go online to the Rotary's website. It's a YouTube website. They have their own Rotary channel, Cedar Wully Rotary Channel. And Lisa did make this presentation to the Rotary last week. So if you're interested in the freeholder issue, hers was strictly educational. It wasn't about for or against, it was about what, what does this mean to me? So that was my two things.
She actually ran in the last one, didn't she? She actually ran as a freeholder, didn't she, in the last, the last time this was held? I thought she said she did. Let's either hear nor there. So just kind of wrapping it up, I just want to let everybody know that on the 22nd, what used to be the hospital pavilion is now the Cedar Wully Clinic. They've changed the name and they're going, going to be having a open house and a wellness fair on, on Saturday, the 22nd. And I believe it's from 10 to 2, I believe is what it is. I know it starts at 10 a.m. So it's a wonderful opportunity to go out and see what they have done. I know that they've actually named some of the halls after some of the streets here in Cedar Wully. It sounds quite clever. So yeah, Saturday, the 22nd. And with that, we will move on to the proclamation. I'm wondering, is Calista Scott here? Yes, Calista. Do you want to come up and talk about the, because you are the director, right, of the, do you want to come up and talk about it for just a few minutes so people know what it is before I do the proclamation?
Well, yes, I can do that. My name is Calista Scott, and I am the director of the Diaper Bank of Skagit County. My background is in maternal child nursing.
Could you speak into the mic?
Oh, yes.
And the only reason I ask is because people do watch this, and I'm sure they'll want to hear what you have to say.
All right.
Yeah, thank you.
So my background was in maternal child nursing. And I'm pleased to meet you, and I'm from La Conner. And I think with the first proclamation, Mr. Berg helped get that facilitated so that we could get that one signed that year. That was about three years ago. So diaper need is a consequence of poverty not well-known or understood. However, the National Diaper Bank Network, the foremost national authority on diaper need, is continuously seeking to paint a clearer picture, including the difficult barriers and trade-offs families in need face daily. Unless you have a child or grandchild, you may not know diapers are expensive, costing $80 to $100 a month per child. Babies use a lot of diapers, about 50 per week. Food stamps reach millions of people who need food assistance, promoting long-term health and well-being. But many people are not aware that food stamps, because it is considered a nutrition program, does not cover diapers. WIC, another government program for women, infants, and children, is also a nutrition program and does not cover diapers. A study titled "In Short Supply," released in 2013 by Feeding America, reveals how many families struggle to afford basic non-food goods, products that are related to personal, household, and baby care. To cope with this lack of goods, families use a variety of strategies, using less, substituting, borrowing, and doing without. When needing to prioritize some expenses over others, families may start by cutting back on food and medicine. Mothers have reported they choose to buy diapers rather than eat. In short supply, babies are left in diapers for long periods of time. These situations are physically uncomfortable, as you can imagine, as well as dangerous for a child. Diaper rash means more doctor visits and possible hospitalizations. Excessive crying increases parental stress and the likelihood of child abuse. We've all heard of shaken baby syndrome. We know from the Joint Commission's three-year study on the mental health of children that a child's basis for emotional sturdiness is formed during early infancy, and that the love and affection he receives from his mother or caregiver, or critically from birth through age three, determines the path of emotional development that will carry him through his life. The commission, who we know by the often repeated words, "Children are a nation's most precious resource," or, as I like to say, "Children are a community's most precious resource," call for us to commit to the health of our children by considering, this is what the commission said, "by considering both human development and the environment in which children live, learn, and shape themselves." Saying an honest effort to help children grow up into strong, healthy adults can only benefit a nation or a community, they warned that a lack of commitment to do so can lead to disaster. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Calista. So in light of that, I would like to read the proclamation, the official statement, whereas diaper need, the condition of not having a sufficient supply of clean diapers to ensure that infants and toddlers are clean, healthy, and dry, can adversely affect the health and welfare of infants, toddlers, and their families. And whereas national surveys report that one in three mothers experiencing diaper need at some time while their children are less than three years of age, and 48% of families delay in changing a diaper to extend their supply. And whereas the average infant or toddler requires an average of at least 50 diapers, 50 diaper changes per week over three years. And whereas there are no government assistance programs for the purchase or provision of diapers, and a monthly supply of diapers can cost as much as 6% of full-time minimum wage worker's salary, therefore, obtaining sufficient supply of diapers can cause economic hardship to families. And whereas a supply of diapers is generally an eligibility requirement for infant and toddlers to participate in childcare programs and quality early education programs. And whereas the people of Cedar Wully recognize that addressing diaper need can lead to an economic opportunity for the state's low-income families and can lead to improved health for families and their communities. And whereas, Skagit County is proud to be home of the Diaper Bank of Skagit County, recognizes the importance of diapers in helping provide economic stability for families, and distributes diapers to poor families through various channels. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Julia Johnson, for the City of Cedar Wully, do hereby proclaim the week of September 24th through September 30th, 2018, as diaper need awareness week in the City of Cedar Wully, and to encourage the citizens of Cedar Wully to donate generously to the Diaper Bank of Skagit County that distributes diapers to families in need to help alleviate diaper need in Cedar Wully and throughout the county. Thank you, Calista. Thank you so much for getting this started and taking care of this great need, making us aware as well.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. So now we move on to public comment. And so I will open public comment at 8:03. As you come forward, please give your name and address, and try to limit what you have to say to about three minutes. So do we have anyone for public comment? Okay.
My name is Bonnie Hall. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
My name is Bonnie Hall. I live on 801 Fidalgo Street in Cedar Wully. And I'm here to let everyone know that we're having a Crop Hunger Walk again this year in our community to support fighting hunger globally and locally. And Mayor Johnson, want to thank you for being willing to sign up to walk with us. We're so excited to have you and hope to have the mayor from Mount Vernon in Burlington again this year. Mayor Boudreaux has also signed up, so we're happy that she has. So what the Crop Hunger Walk is, is a chance to raise money to fight hunger globally. 75% goes to fight hunger globally and 25% stays locally, and that goes to support all the meal programs in Skagit County. So that's Friendship House and then all the other meal and food programs that are receiving funds from the Skagit Food Distribution Center. They distribute that all. And some of the money, of course, goes to Helping Hands here in Cedar Wully. Always appreciate supporting them. The walk is downtown Mount Vernon. It's either, there are two routes. There's a 3.4-mile route or a one-mile route. They start at Mount Vernon Christian, and they go downtown and up through the Lions Park and back on the Skagit River Walk. So it's beautiful, beautiful walk and a great chance for us to enjoy all the beauty in Skagit County. So kids and strollers, dogs are all welcome. People can register online if they want to register ahead, or they can just show up on the walk day. Last year, we had over 200 people and we raised over $10,000. We hope to double that this year. And there's no cost to walk, it's a donation-only basis. And Mayor Johnson, since we're having you walk with us this year, I brought you a Crop Hunger Walk t-shirt.
Well, thank you.
Yes. And you can wear that if you'd like. And appreciate you being able to do it. And let everyone know I have brochures. I'll put them on the back table if people are interested in taking one. There's a website on the back to get more information and hope to just keep spreading the word.
Well, thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
Yep, making us aware. I saw a hand go up. Yes?
Hello. Hello, my name's Corian Jensen. I live at 739 Saff Road. I'm the president of the Arts Council in Cedar Wully. I've been volunteering with them for the past five years. And I came to give a report on our second annual Art in the Park and Community Talent Show that we put on on August 26th at Riverfront Park. Luckily, the rain cleared and we had a dry afternoon to have lots of fun playing in the park with art and music. We had some live art demonstrations, including people painting in the park, and Chief Tucker was doing foraging and letting kids experience that new art form. We had reptile petting zoo, we had singers of all kinds, we had a one-man band. Mick Anthony entertained us for a long time, was great. We also had art therapy services there for people with PTSD that are affected by the opioid epidemic, which at our next city, our next Arts Council meeting, we'll be getting further into that, opening up some art therapy for the community. We also had electronic dance music, and it was really great to see just a wide variety of art and music in that beautiful park. Because Don Wick and I came up with the idea to put that event together and really focus on that beautiful park and focus on all the amazing talent in our community. I did have some challenges organizing this event by myself with a skeleton crew. I spent a few weeks in Michigan where I got my arm broken, and my sister passed away a week before the event. But it came together beautifully. And I would like to ask for more support from the community, more community organizations to participate next year. And I'd like to get the crew going to start organizing the event as soon as possible so we can really put on a showcase of the art and music and talent in Cedar Wully. Okay, I also wanted to thank some of the sponsors and supporters that we had. First of all, the volunteers that helped make it possible. Carl DeYoung, Jessica Brooks, Kay Streeter, and Brett Sandstrom. Also, our sponsors and supporters, the City of Cedar Wully and the city council, the Chamber of Commerce, the police department, Skagit Log Construction Company, Iron Mountain Bar and Grill, Alleluia Business Systems, Northwest Mountain Shop and Guide, KSVR, Community Radio, and KSVU, Hoskins Insurance, Helping Hands, Food Bank and Opportunities Center, the Cedar Wully Museum, Skagit Valley Signs and Graphics, Shelley Shack, Animal House Pet grooming, Pterodactyl Designs, Image 360 in Burlington, Flowers on Woodward, Tucker Forge, and City Councilman Carl DeYoung.
I have to say, it was, it was absolutely lovely. It was a lovely day, and you did a beautiful job.
Thank you.
Yeah, you really.
And I would, I hope next year to have more of a budget, more of a team, and we can really make it shine. I also wanted to just take a moment to say a couple of things. If anybody would like to get involved with some future art projects, I have some ideas for a mural. I won't say too much. I got to make sure it's okay first. But for new murals and some other art downtown, I want to invite everyone to our next public meeting. We're going to do the second Tuesdays of the month at 6:00 p.m. So that's October 9th at the Wully Market upstairs. If anybody would like to come participate with current art projects, future art projects, or to help with the committee for next year. Also, I just wanted to state that due to rain last week, the Cedar Wully Skate Competition was postponed to this Saturday at 10 a.m. So if anybody's available to come, hopefully the rain will stay away, and the skate competition will be going on this Saturday.
So do you want to mention the flags that you're looking to put up downtown?
One of the first projects that I would like to do is, is work, I don't know how to navigate, but we want to replace the banners that were up a few years ago, so when the flower baskets come down, it just would liven up downtown between now and Christmas.
And how can people get involved with that? Can they make donations?
Come to the meeting and, yeah, donations. Because we just spoke, given it with the event, and we would like to raise more money. So if anybody has ideas or would like to help, please get ahold of me.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. I want to mention too, Brett, did you want to come forward?
Hi.
Well, I was just going to say, I really appreciated your art, too. He's quite the artist.
Hello, Brett Sandstrom, 432 Tachot Street. I guess first I start with a compliment to the fire and police department here in Cedar Wully. I was out of school today where there was, I think, a fire call and also a police call. And, you know, these guys do things and see things that we hope never to experience in our lives, and they, you know, might forever ending, you know, gratitude. So thank you. Second, 109 Jamison Street is kind of looking kind of crummy. The county is keeping up their end of the bargain by keeping their lot, that section kind of the side by the rail tracks, clean and clear, but the property owners at 109 are letting it grow again, and I think maybe it's time to co-inforce against that before we start to attract nuisances again, so.
Okay. All right.
Thanks.
Thank you, Brett. Yes?
Teresa P. with Skagit Habitat for Humanity. My address is 1700 Lindsay. I live in Mount Vernon. Sorry, I've been looking for property in Cedar. I'm here tonight to say that with Habitat, we built 33 homes here in Skagit County. And out of those 33 homes, six homes, families live here in Cedar Wully. And we, two years ago, a little over two years ago, we purchased property here in Cedar Wully for another four lots. It's on Beatty Street. And we're very excited that with that, we started a partnership with the school district, the Cedar Wully High School and the CTE program. And they brought on geometry and construction program to their school district and because of the partnership with Habitat. With those four lots, they are directly located behind the high school, and we are really excited as well that with the city, not knowing when we purchased it, but that the city was bringing forward the West Nelson, West Bennett Street, and Beatty Street involved in it. So SUER is actually going. So sewer is actually going in, and so timing-wise, it's working out well. We're finishing up our 34th and 35th home in Mount Vernon as we speak. Should be finished by the end of this year, and we are mobilizing, getting boundary line adjustments, and working with the city to get permitting for the Beatty Street properties. So you'll see us start mobilizing over there real shortly, and so we're just thrilled that the timing-wise, that's working out with the sewer as well. But also, look for the students, the high school students, start in September, bringing in with the Geometry and Construction, the STEM program. They are going to be learning STEM-related science, technology, engineering, mathematics through this Geometry and Construction program. And by probably November, depending on how fast we can get out to the Beatty Street property, they will actually be working with our construction coordinator and all of our volunteers, and they will get hands-on skills related to building the house. So they'll be physically building the house alongside our volunteers, our families, and our construction coordinator. So we're very excited to be back in Cedar, and as well as looking for other property here. If anybody wants, I will have some brochures to find out more about the construction geometry program. So thank you.
Thank you for the update. Thank you for coming. Yes.
Hello, my name's Becky Larson. I live at 3315 Arbor Street in Alphalos, in Mount Vernon, sorry. But I work out here. I have a comment about the single-use plastic bag ban ordinance. I wanted to know if you wanted me to say it here or during the new business?
Go ahead.
Okay. So going over here, I'm the executive director of the Helping Hands Solutions Center. I know, we'll get it one day. And we use plastic bags all the time. We never buy them. We reuse them. So we're a place that community can come and bring those plastic bags. We look almost all the churches that donate to the food bank, recycle for us, the schools do. And what we're doing right now is our CHOW program, which is Cutting Hunger on the Weekends for Kids. We're up to 780 kids starting next week. I know. Crazy. They go in plastic bags every week. So our goal is to get up to about 2,000 to 3,000. We're stretching into Mount Vernon because Mount Vernon can't sustain that amount of kids, so we've, our board has taken that on as something that we're doing for the Mount Vernon Food Bank. And so, and honestly, what we have in the future may even double that. So I looked at the cost, and I know in here it says that nonprofits would be excluded for reusing them, but it's not about that. It's about we wouldn't have access to these ones that the community, they can't have them, so they can't donate them to us to use. And so I looked it up on eBay. If I bought 1,000 of them, and I looked one time, it was $38, which is $190 a week for us, which is $10,000 a year, which could purchase 329,000 pounds of food at 3 cents a pound for us. So that takes a lot of food out of the system for our community just because we can't, we don't have access to the recycled bags. So we've tried tote bags when we first did it, and we never got, they all kept them. The kids kept them, so we never got them back. They got dirty and messy, and so we had to wash them, so we couldn't do that. We've tried the plastic bags, but because the newspaper actually delivers them directly to the kids' houses, they get wet, and so that's not gonna work either. And so we've tried every option that we have available to us. Somebody did mention ones that biodegrade, which I didn't even know that existed, so we can look into that. But again, that would be a cost for us, and I'm not even sure if they would hold what we put in the bag, so we're gonna bring one and test it out. But I would like to at least, you know, I wanted to at least put our opinion on there as I need my, our community to get, I'm constantly asking for us to reuse those bags, and I think something that we, I might be able to bring to my board of directors is maybe putting bins out places so people have places to put those used ones, so they know that we need them. But I just wanted to, you know, be here today and say that we really, really need them. And it's, again, it's not about us using them, it's I need the communities to donate them, which then means that they kind of need to use them, so.
So I just, I have a suggestion.
Okay.
So as a society, we're actually being encouraged to, for 99 cents, we buy our own bag at the store, and we bring it back and forth, which I do. I do do that, and I know there's other people.
I do, too.
Here at the council who do that. So I know that you're looking for solutions as part of a solution center. Maybe that's a solution towards the economy, towards our ecological basis. So just something to think about, something to...
Well, one of the churches is gonna start making bags for us, but that's really for the people that come shopping every week, because they can bring it with them. I can't leave, for children, I don't want the children to be responsible for bringing their bag back, because it really doesn't work to ask a five-year-old to, you can't get food unless you bring your bag back.
Isn't the child usually with the parent?
They are, but again, it was real, we bought 400 of them, little backpacks, when we first started the program, and within six weeks, they were all gone. And we were only taking care of 75 kids at that time, because people just, they lose them, they forget them, and so right now, the only way we can use them is reusable plastic bags. Which is unfortunate, but I'm glad that we are a place that people can put them, so they're not ending up in the landfill and on the side of the road. That's it.
Do you have questions?
Questions?
Becky, I have a question. I know you mentioned the schools, so are you collecting bags at the school?
Yes.
So there's a chance that the child that received a bag with food in it might bring that bag back to recycle?
I'm hoping so. I'm hoping so. I just don't want to make it mandatory that they can't get food without the bag.
No way, no way. But I'm just wondering if that, that bag may still continue to be reused down the road.
Yeah.
Hopefully?
Yeah. We actually have never bought bags, ever. I buy the grocery, like the produce bags, but I don't buy the little shopping bags.
Becky, you also mentioned that these bags, you know, are being reused, and I know that we'd been asked at Rotary to bring them in as well. Can we set up a bin down at, say, the Chamber of Commerce or something for you?
I would like to see a bin at the new library, in City Hall, at all the schools. I mean, that's easy. I can find those in a heartbeat. If that's what it takes to at least have a place for people to bring them in lots of places, I have lots of volunteers who could pick it up and bring it, just so that they don't actually have to come out to the solution center. We actually can come out to them, and we'll, you know, meet them in there where they're at. Just a solution.
Yeah, hey Becky, I was wondering if you could let us know about how many bags you use a year, or what you project you'll be using in 2019?
Math.
Well, just, you know, throw some spaghetti on the wall. Are we looking at hundreds, thousands, 10,000, 100,000?
Well, if we're starting at the school, the school day, one week, 1,000 kids a week, roughly.
Fifty-two.
With our goal to get to at least double that.
Then 10.
Yeah, you get to do the math.
Yep.
And then with a potential donor coming on board who wants to double that, and then with the, what we give out to each family, so we see 1,000 families a week, I'm gonna assume with the amount of produce that we hand out, they're taking at least three if we average, so.
So that...
So 3,000, well, 5,000 a week.
Yeah.
Times 52, quick.
That's a quarter million.
More than a million.
Yeah.
All right, and do you use a double bag in the freezers for using?
We actually buy those because they have to be food-grade and clean, so the other ones, produce, they take home and wash. We, and, but the, like, if I'm doing like fish or something, we buy those bags.
So would it be fair to say that from your summary, that you've tried alternative substitutes to these bags in the past, and you have direct experience that this is the best solution that you have, and also that it's not just about where you can pick them up to get donated, but that this ordinance would impact that supply for you to receive in order to do a quarter million bags a year?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you for listening.
Thanks, Becky.
Anybody else for public comment? All right, I'm gonna close public comment at 8:22. And we are on to Unfinished Business, which is on page 75, the City Council Critical Goals and Objectives. And I don't know if there, are there questions? Has everybody had a chance to look this over and see if it...
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
I have a motion.
All right.
To adopt the updated critical goals and objectives as amended.
All right. So I have a motion by Councilman DeYoung and seconded by Councilman Owen. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Moving on to New Business, we were just discussing it, the single-use plastic bag ordinance. This is a first reading. So we've already started the discussion. Is there anything else anybody would like to add?
I'm afraid with the information we just received, that I'm not gonna support this. Just...
I'm with you.
Yeah. I think we should table this.
All right, you can do that. Is there a motion to table?
Yes. I'm moving that we table this.
Second?
Second.
Okay. A motion by DeYoung and a second by Kinzer?
No, by Dunley.
By Dunley, sorry, and seconded by Kinzer, sorry. To table the single-use plastic bag ordinance. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Motion carries. The EMS update, where we spent a good hour discussing that. So Erin, did you want to talk about this again? Any questions?
Sure. So the last motion was by who?
Dunley, seconded by?
Kinzer.
Kinzer. Tabled the whole paper, plastic bag.
The one use, single use.
Single use, yeah.
That carried 6-0, was it? Was it tabled to a time certain, or simply tabled until it's brought back to the council?
Just tabled till it's brought back.
Okay.
We can discuss it at the next work session?
Yeah, yeah. We're more free, slowly.
You want it back at a work session?
Yeah.
Okay. So on the EMS...
Is that by consensus? Because I would object to that.
So we had, we had actually a motion by Dunley and a second by Cornigay to take it to the work session. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'd like to speak to the motion if I could.
Sure, please.
All right, thank you. Madam Mayor, this is, we did enjoy, yeah, it's on, it's a blue light. This council did receive a great bit of theater with the bag a couple of weeks ago. I would disagree with the description that they're single-use only. Obviously, they're not single-use only. Additionally, information I've received from the senior center is that they double-bag their food in the freezer with these bags. Additionally, they are used for the Meals on Wheels program, and so we are talking about affecting the vulnerable population of our, not only our city, but also our region with this proposal. Additionally, I believe it to be a tax upon folks that are already struggling if they have to buy bags. Furthermore, I have seen this in action in other municipalities, where if we are trying to reduce the amount of fossil fuels in the system, we see that the opposite has happened when they are selling the bags at the grocery store. They are no longer the very thin bags that we have, but they actually increase the mill density of the bags, so they actually require more fossil fuels to make, and they, again, are incurred a cost to folks that are already struggling in our region in order to buy those that they will just simply use to, as a substitute for plastic bags at this time. I think it would be extremely detrimental to the vulnerable population that we are here to serve and recognize and might not be here to speak for themselves. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments?
I have a comment. I actually thought that in here, struggling populations were exempt, and we could actually even write in as a council additional.
So I didn't interrupt the last council member, and I'm not trying to pick on you, but the motion on the floor is a motion to table to a time certain.
Correct.
And the debate is now on the merit of the ordinance itself. That seems to be a bit outside the scope of the question of when you're gonna discuss it.
If I may address that? Not the mayor, so... Yeah, not the mayor.
Sorry.
May I?
Yes.
Thank you. Is that, I understand the parliamentary procedure, and if we, the motion that we just accepted that was to table, and that would mean at any other time that we could pick it up. It, to me, that seemed appropriate. I would, I would have even looked for something to table indefinitely, which essentially kills the motion. I understand that now that there is a motion to put this before a work session, but I think by the feeling of the room, I think you know how the council feels about this ordinance at this time based upon the testimony of folks that are serving our vulnerable population. Thank you.
May I come in on that, please?
Yes.
I'd like to still continue to suggest that we discuss it in the work session, maybe not necessarily as that ordinance is written, but to explore other options for possibly collecting these plastic bags, or how we can move forward in a productive manner in the use of supposedly single-use plastic bags. So just bring up the topic again, but not the ordinance.
Well, and actually, in having the discussion about the ordinance, we could, I think we do have the right to change it up if we so choose, so it's not like it's, you have to accept it as written. It can be changed up. So, and I can't remember, did we all say, did we vote? No, we did not. Okay, so all in favor of tabling it and...
Until the work session.
Thank you. Tabling till the next work session? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
So let's take a count of hands. How many would like to table it till the next work session? So that's four against two, so motion carries. Okay. So next work session, we'll be talking about it.
Okay, thank you. I'm just trying to take notes for Cheryl, who will make her life easier when she's listening to this recording and reliving our memories after her vacation. On the EMS update, I feel like I gave a pretty detailed description in the study session that preceded this meeting. Council had all sorts of questions, and we walked through it. I guess the nutshell is, the project is moving forward on track for a January 1, 2019 implementation. There are a number of actions upcoming, including at your next council meeting, but tonight we're looking for two specific actions. One is approval of the work rules for fire department employees, which will address the wages, hours, and working conditions for our soon-to-be newly hired firefighter paramedics. And two is approval of a position and proposed salary for a Medicare compliance officer/billing clerk. So unless there are questions, those are the two items that we're asking for action on the city council tonight, and I guess just for the benefit of the, of the recording, you know, the proposal is ultimately to hire eight FTEs using a combination of Skagit County EMS levying funding, which the county commissioners in the cities came to conceptual agreement on yesterday, and the commissioners approved a funding allocation model at their meeting yesterday, and patient billing revenues, which for us would generate approximately $1.7 million a year beginning in 2019 to add this scope of work to the fire department.
All right, so unless there's any more discussion, the, let's take these motions separately. So the first would be, should the council approve the draft work rules for the fire department employee, including the wages and the new position of the firefighter paramedic? So do I have a motion?
So moved on just what you said.
Okay. A second?
I'll second that.
Okay. So we have a motion by Cornigay and a second by Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, and the second motion is, should the council approve a proposed salary schedule for the proposed medical Medicare compliance officer/billing clerk position? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. So, second.
Okay. So I have a motion by Kelly and a second by Kinzer. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So the motion's carry. So now we have Mark. This looks like it's you. There's a possible on-call professional services... There's a possible on-call professional services agreement?
Yes, this is another late items thing. I apologize for that. We had several tragedies in our department over the last couple of weeks, and I was on vacation, so this one had to come in late. Every year, we award two professional service agreements for land surveying in the city. We've gotten to the point where the two companies that we normally use for that kind of activity are just simply not able to fulfill the needs of the city. So we're proposing a third one with Semrao Engineering of Mount Vernon with this, and the first task order for them would be the construction staking for the State Street pavement and utilities project. And so that's what's before you tonight. The work is fully funded, as I discussed in the memorandum. And this is another on-call, so we would look at using them for potentially one other project, which is the West Nelson, West Bennett Sewer Extension Project that you awarded tonight as well. This is time-sensitive for us. As I mentioned earlier, the State Street project is starting on the 17th. So we do recommend approval of this particular professional services agreement.
Any questions?
I move to authorize the mayor to execute the attached 2018 Professional Services Agreement Number 2018 PS27 with Semrao Engineering and Surveying, PLLC of Mount Vernon, Washington, for on-call professional services not to exceed $25,000.
Okay. So I had a motion by Councilwoman Dunley, seconded by Councilman Owen. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So any questions regarding the informational items? With that, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.